Next, I call Clerk Brian Wopat to administer the ceremonial oath of office to newly appointed Board Member Maggie Smith.
Raise your right hand. You will be here for me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Maggie Smith.
Who have been duly elected.
Who have been duly elected.
To the Holman Board of Education.
To the Holman Board of Education.
Of the school district home.
Of the school district home.
But have not yet entered upon.
But have not yet entered upon.
The duties thereof.
The duties thereof.
I swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Wopat, would you please call the rule?
Gary Dunlop.
I guess right now absent.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Excused.
Brian Wopat here. Barb Wench.
Here.
Ellen Fox.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Maggie Smith.
Here.
With five of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media with this in mind, and are there any changes to the agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Just a second.
Second.
Chris has moved, Brian has seconded, to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. All right, so tonight, we have public participation. I will call on those registered to address the board relative to an agenda item at this time. Public participants will state their name, address, and affiliation with the agenda item addressed. Public participation is limited to five minutes per person. I ask those present to respect the rights of others wishing to speak by refraining from interrupting them. According to Board Policy 187, citizens are expected to use proper etiquette, decorum, and respect when addressing the board. Robert's rules of order will be followed. So first up, we have Michelle Wench. And our Clerk Brian Wopat will be your timekeeper.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wench. I reside at W. 7871 Windmill Street in Holman, Wisconsin. I'm a 1988 graduate of Holman High School, a parent of 2016 and 2018 graduates of Holman High School, and a teacher who has proudly served over 27 years to the students of our district as a teacher at Holman High School. I am here to speak about Agenda Item 10.4, Educator Base Wage Increases for the 2022-2023 School Year. One of our district's vision, missions, and values is equity. I do not believe the district is honoring this value. Some staff members are getting over 4.7%, while others are receiving a 2.2% increase. Another way equity is not being honored is that some staff members are receiving all of the step increases they have missed, while others are only receiving those increases the next year due to the district's misinterpretation of the board's proposal. The board resolution to move staff members to their appropriate step on the salary schedule was greatly appreciated and should have been a morale booster. Instead, it became a source of contention because it was not equitably applied to all who qualified for the step advancement. This makes some members feel as if they are not valued as much as other members in the district. When different percent per cells are applied to different cells on the salary grid, this unequitable dispersment also makes some staff members feel less valued than others. Equity is important for staff morale. When staff are told they are valued but not shown that through equitable actions, it not only erodes morale, but it also erodes trust. The most effective salary schedules that value equity, morale, and trust are ones that guarantee movements of steps each year as they are earned and provide an equitable percent per cell increase. The district knows everyone's position on the salary schedule, and step movement can be predicted and budgeted for each year. That way, the CPI can be applied to each cell, keeping our staff members moving forward instead of backwards, as many of our members are doing this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Next up is Amy Steckley.
Good evening. My name is Amy Steckley. I reside at N. 7066 Birch Street in Holman, Wisconsin. I am a middle school teacher. I am the reading interventionist. I work with the students who are struggling the most at our middle school as readers. And I also have children that are at Holman High School. I also have a recent graduate. She has just started, I want to state this today, actually. And the reason I'm here is to talk a little bit about the salary schedule and the compensation that teachers are receiving. I have two master's degrees. I have a reading specialist certificate and a reading teacher certificate. I also have my degree for a principal license. I'm bottomed out on the salary schedule. And in order for us to pay, my husband is also a teacher. He teaches at the Trumpolo School District. In order for us to pay for college, player packs for football, dance team, and so on, we both have part-time jobs. I have two part-time jobs. My husband also has a part-time job as a driver's ed instructor. And my, this summer, I spend most of my time at QuickTrip. And the hours I put in there and the profit sharing that they provide through QuickTrip paid for my Christmas gifts for my children this year. Those extras, I don't know where they would have come from if I didn't have a part-time job. So I'm just asking you to reconsider and to think about the impact that it has on teachers. I'm willing to put in the extra hours. Last week, we're the two weeks before registration, I spent 12 hours on both registration days on my own time screening incoming sixth graders and those students who are new to our school district to make sure that they have placement in the correct spots, looking for those students who needed that the most. When asked if that would be something that would be covered or that I could get a stipend for, I was told no, but I did it anyway because I know it's in the best interest of students. Students coming into the middle school will have first-day opportunity for reading intervention because of the extra time that I put in. I would just ask that you consider, you know, those people who are towards the bottom of the salary schedule, how that impacts cost of living, because right now, my husband and I both really have to put in a lot of extra hours in order for our children to have the extra things that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, next is Tracy Dubkowski.
Hi, I'm Tracy Dubkowski. I reside at W. 7704 Van Dunk Place in Holman. I too am speaking tonight on the Agenda Item Regarding Educator Base Wage Increase. Tonight, as a board, you will vote to impose the school district's final negotiation offer. As a member of the HEA negotiations team, I think it is important for the board to know that HEA was willing to compromise on our last offer and meet the district somewhere in the middle of the two proposals. The district was not open to that. To state that the district is giving teachers a 4.7% cost of living increase is a bit misleading. The total package of that offer does equal 4.7%. However, the district's proposal only amounts to a 2.95% cost of increase off of the base wage or the lowest wage on our salary grid. This amount has then been distributed equally as a dollar amount to each teacher. This is actually the cheapest way to do this. This really only equals about a 2.6% true cost of living increase when computing it off of everyone's actual wages. Essentially, people are taking a 2% inflationary pay cut. This is not the way that other districts such as La Crosse and Onalaska apply the cost of living increase. Those districts apply that percentage directly to each teacher's salary. It is why Holman has and will continue to have lower teacher salaries than neighboring districts. It should be noted that the group of teachers who will get the lowest increase are those who have been in our district the longest. Think about that. The district is giving those teachers who have dedicated their entire careers to this district, who in many cases have moved their families to this district, who have spent 15 or more years in this district, the lowest increase. Is that how we value those staff? What message does that send to our other staff members? What incentive do they have to stay? Our district continues to have amazing teachers leave for other districts. This directly impacts student learning. I would encourage you to talk to your student representative on the board about the impact continuous turnover of staff has on the students in our district. As a parent of two Holman students, I am so grateful that the over 30 new teachers that were hired this year chose Holman. So, so grateful. But as a district, what are we doing to keep them here? As you consider this base wage proposal, I would like you to think about the teachers in this room and the many who are not here tonight who will be impacted by this. These are people who love and care for the students in their classrooms each year like their own. These are people who have already spent countless hours unpaid in their classrooms getting them ready for the school year, making sure they have classrooms that are welcoming spaces for all kids. These are people who have purchased extra school supplies with their own money to make sure that all kids have what they need. These are people who so many students cannot wait to meet on the first day of school. These are people who love what they do and still get excited for the first day of school just like our kids do. These are people who give up time with their own families to coach or advise activities for our kids. We all can name a teacher who has had a positive impact on us at some point in our lives. These teachers are those people to students. These are also people who work two or three jobs, whose rent went up over 5% this year. These are people who spent the summer working one or more jobs so that they can afford to take their family on vacation, who are putting off starting a family because they fear they cannot afford it, who would love to be able to purchase a home at some point. No one becomes a teacher so that they become super wealthy. But people do deserve to be fairly compensated, to feel valued for what they do. We know and understand that the district does not have an endless pot of money to use for teacher salaries. If the issue standing in the way of applying the CPI percentage differently than the way it is currently done is the teacher salary matrix, HEA is willing to work with the district and the board on that issue. In fact, our negotiations team has brought ideas forward in the past. HEA is committed to working with the district administration and the school board to ensure our teachers are paid a salary that keeps up with inflation, which allow our district to remain competitive, to ensure we are attracting and retaining the very best educators to our district. Our students deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, next we'll be moving on to the district's administrators' report. Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will now present the district administrators' report on behalf of Dr. Mueller.
Thank you, Jennifer. So Dr. Mueller is out of the office today, so I'll present both the district administrators' report and the recognition issue and thank you items on the agenda this evening. As Tracy just noted, we did welcome over 30 new teachers to the district. I believe it was 38 last week, August 17th and 18th, for orientation. All staff, not just education staff or new educators, will be welcomed back tomorrow morning for our opening day breakfast and kickoff in the Fine Arts Center after breakfast. We are excited for students to return to the classroom on Thursday, September 1st, for the first day of school. And then just a note for the homecoming week coming up in September to plan for that. September 12th through the 17th is filled with fun activities for homecoming at Holman High School. The parade is scheduled for Friday, the 16th, at 1:15. The route will begin near Viking Elementary, proceeding down Wall Street and turning right or north on Main. It'll continue on Main Street through the downtown area, ending in St. Elizabeth's Parking Lot. The Second Annual Eat the Street for Education, which replaced the previous Pork Feed, will take place on the Holman High School Student Parking Lot from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. that same day on the 16th. Guests can visit any of the food trucks and help support the Activities Department and the Holman Area Foundation. The football team will take on the Toma Timberwolves at 7:00 p.m. on the 16th, and the homecoming dance is scheduled for Saturday, the 17th of September.
Okay, moving on to recognition and thank yous.
So the district would like to thank both Amazon.com of French Island Distribution Center and also the Holman Area Business Association for school supply donations. The Amazon.com Distribution Center donated 240 backpacks plus miscellaneous school supplies, and the Holman Business Association also donated school supplies, two full carloads of supplies for students. So I do encourage any staff that knows of a student in need of supplies for the school year to please reach out to your supervisor, and they will get in touch with Stacy Lockington at the district office to help get those to the kids that need it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will present the Annual Seclusion, Restraint, and Bullying Report. This item will appear on the September 12th Consent Agenda as an acknowledgment of the board receiving the report.
Good evening, everyone. Let me see if I can find. Is this the right one, Stacy? Stacy, is this the right?
Should be up here.
I'm not seeing it on here. This doesn't look like the right. Is this like going to be last time?
I'm going to go with the most.
Yeah.
It's item number 10.1, if that helps.
Oh, that would be good. Sorry. That's all right?
The right one, no.
Stacy should go, but.
No worries, no worries. Thank you. Okay, so I'm here to talk about our Seclusion, Restraint, and Bullying Report. We do this annually as part of the 2019 Wisconsin Act 118. And I'm going to see if I can actually find this. There we go. All right, so I'm not going to read all the numbers to you, but you can look at the list of the number of students or the number of incidents we've had for restraint. And remember, that is when we have to use physical contact with a student who might be dysregulated to the point that is unsafe to self or others. We have staff that are trained to do this. We have a trainer in district that also provides training for our staff. Seclusion would be when we have students who need to be in a separate area that they're not allowed to leave based on their level of safety. So they might have some dysregulation to the point of being unsafe, throwing things, those type of things. So we would want to make sure we keep them safe from themselves and others until they're able to deescalate and process through and then return to the setting or a different setting. And then bullying, again, these are based on DPIs or the district's definition of bullying, which is the same thing. No other district charts bullying the same way. And so as we talked at our board retreat last week, this is how our district calculates the number of incidents of bullying. And it isn't, it's nationally reported. It isn't necessarily state-reported, so it's hard to compare from peer district to peer district. But these are the results for us in our district. And then again, we, for our next steps, we want to make sure that we are implementing all the social-emotional learning pieces in each of our building levels that will be happening tomorrow and throughout the year. We'll continue to train staff on de-escalation techniques, which is the crux of how we help our students, and then make sure that we start using some different race and ethnicity equity data as we're looking at these numbers, not just students with disabilities. Annually train our staff in seclusion and restraint techniques. And then we also revised our bullying policy at our Salk Committee Meeting, Student Achievement and Learning, and that was a goal of ours for last year, so that was completed. Any questions on this?
Any questions? Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Okay, Jill Mason will continue with the Peace of Mind Counseling MOU Agenda Item. This will appear on tonight's consent agenda so that services may be in place for the start of the school year.
Thank you. Yes, we have been looking forward to this contract with peace of mind. We do have a full-time mental health provider for our school district for the next two years. We're very excited. The individual will be starting on September 1st and providing services to our district schools based on a mental health pathway that our Student Services, District Student Services Team worked on. So we'll be working on that at a building level with everyone to make sure we're able to offer these services to the students who need them the most. Any questions on this one?
Questions? No questions.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 10.3. Julie Holman will now present the 2022-23 Proposed Budget for Consent on September 12th.
Good evening. I'm going to start with some notes from the issue paper that was shared with the board, and then we'll move on to the presentation on the screen, which gives some of the summary slides for the DPI format for budgeting in the state of Wisconsin. So the development of the budget forecast began back with the variables in December and January brought to the board. Rising inflation has caused the need to increase those input variables for wages and benefits, utilities, equipment, supplies, and fuel, among other things. In May, the board approved a 4.7% base wage increase for the hourly administrative employee groups, and the board's currently finalizing educator wages for 2022-23. The 2022-23 Proposed Budget includes Funds 10, General Fund; 21, Gift Account; 27, Special Education; Fund 39, which is the voter-approved debt service; Fund 46, Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund; Fund 50, School Nutrition; and Fund 80, Community Service. State and local levy revenue in the General Fund is calculated using the Revenue Limit Formula in Wisconsin, and for the proposed budget purposes is based on the five-year trend enrollment projection. Last fall, we had the Applied Population Laboratory of Madison complete a report for the school district of Holman, which was presented to the board in December to give us a sort of a reboot in our enrollment projections. It's something we do about every 10 years to make sure that we are on track. They just have more data than we have access to, including census and birth rates. But this also included all of the area build-outs of residential housing, multifamily housing, things that are going on in Holman that impact, may or may not impact enrollment. So one thing to note with that, just as a reminder, they do predict a 7.5% decline in enrollment over the next five years. It's very consistent with other districts in the state of Wisconsin, with the population within the state declining slowly. So for the purposes of proposed budget and revenue, we are using the five-year projection from APL or using the 2022-23 projection, and then reconciling that with what are we seeing for enrollment in our elementary schools at this time, even though they're not quite here yet, but registrations and enrollment. And then, as you are aware, 3rd Friday in September is really the count date that influences that revenue limit calculation. The COVID-19 pandemic and current environmental economic environment definitely has created continued uncertainty. One thing we've talked about more recently are the number of things that were not completed last year based on challenges in the economy and acquisition. So this proposed budget does include about $560,000 in facility services expenditure budget one time that was planned for last year and could not be completed by the fiscal year-end June 30th based on acquisition of supply, equipment, and services. Since the beginning fund balance for 2023 is the prior year-ending fund balance, it's important to note that the 21-22-ending fund balance is still based on unaudited data. We are getting very close to completing that audit. There's a few outstanding pieces from the state of Wisconsin, such as the Wisconsin Retirement System reporting that we are waiting for. So I don't imagine our fund balance will change much from the proposed budget, but just remember, it is considered still to be unaudited as of June 30th. Fund balance does include a one-time snapshot as of June 30th. It includes receivables and payables. It's not all cash, and it's distributed into various funds, which I will share again this evening. Some of the assumptions that are included for Fund 10 and 27 again this year include the following for the proposed budget. No change in the current level of per pupil categorical aid, no change to the current level of per pupil revenue limit, no change from the special education reimbursement rate. Wage expenditure increases as stated year-on-year based on the Consumer Price Index of 4.7 was approved in the input variables by the board. Employer expenditures for WRS and FICA are a percentage of wage, so the total cost for those will also go up as associated with wage increases. The health insurance premium group rate for the renewal July 1 went up 2%. And then within this budget, currently, we have the remaining dollars from the ESER II Funds, which are federal pandemic relief funds that will expire in 2023, are built into this budget, and a portion of the ESER III federal money, which will expire in 2024. The General Fund Estimated Revenue Budget is $52.6 million. The General Fund Estimated Expenditure Budget is $55.1 million. The proposed budget has a projected fund balance deficit of $2.5 million. This represents about a 4.6% of the General Fund Expenditure Budget. The estimated balance next June 30th of 2023 is about just under $16.6 million, or 30% fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures. Careful planning of one-time expenditures to decrease the fund balance assures retention of sufficient and stable cash reserves for scheduled and unscheduled expenses. And then just as a quick reminder to the board, the original budget does come to the board during the budget hearing October 24th of 2022 as required by statute. It will include adjustments at that time for anything that was allowed to be carried over. And then we will also have by then, the 3rd Friday enrollment, the October 1 Certified Equalized Property Valuation from the Department of Revenue, and the October 15th General Aid Certification from Department of Public Instruction. So next, I'm going to go through, just breaking it into smaller pieces, the five-page document of the DPI summary format for this budget. The first eight lines of the DPI budget format include the Fund 10, General Fund, or our largest operational fund, fund balance. Again, these are estimates. The first column of numbers is the audited 2021. The next column is the fiscal year that we just completed and nearly audited, but at this point, it is not finished. And then the final column of numbers is our proposed budget. The line 8 is the total ending fund balance on June 30th. Bottom right-hand corner is the estimated fund balance that I just stated, about 16, almost $16.6 million. Total ending estimated fund balance represents 30% of the general fund expenditures. Due to an influx of federal pandemic relief revenue combined with equipment supply and service acquisition challenges last fiscal year, this has influenced our starting fund balance. We estimate the starting fund balance to be just over $19 million. Many of those delayed expenditures, as I stated, are now planned for in the 2022-23 Lines 10 through 58 are the General Fund Revenue Summary on the screen. Currently is the total, a subtotal for local sources of revenue. Line 11, more specifically, is the tax line item. Line 11, more specifically, is the tax line item. The state revenue limit and equalized aid formulas determine the distribution between state aid and local levy for the general operating budget. Various factors can influence increases and decreases in the local levy. The school district's general aid is estimated to increase in 2022-23. This is primarily due to, or can be influenced by revenue limit per member, the three-year average membership, and prior year expenditures. Capital improvement expenditures in the General Fund and/or increase in debt service expenditures can also impact state aid through increased shared cost. An increase in the general aid, similar, and similar projected enrollment and the same revenue limit per pupil as prior year actually produces a reduction in the amount we will be allowed to levy in the General Fund for the 2022-23 school year. We estimate at this time that that amount for the tax levy will be $12.2 million. The total local source of revenue is estimated at $12,672 for 2022-23 budget. Line 19 demonstrates payments for services to the school district of Holman. This includes open enrollment tuition payments from other districts. This may also include services for tuition waivers, transportation fees, or other payments for services. The open enrollment transfer for 2022-23 is $8,224, up $63 from last year for regular tuition, and $13,076, up $63 from last year for special education tuition. So this primarily includes the funds we receive for students that are non-residents open enrolling into the school district of Holman. The total estimate for 2022-23 is $1,745,000. Next up is the state sources of revenue in the General Fund. Again, as a reminder, the state legislature did freeze revenue limit per pupil for two years, so we're in the second year of that decision. And so, there's no change to the current level of per pupil categorical aid or per pupil revenue limit. Line 33 is the general state aid. This is projected to increase from $32,270,000 to $33,742,600. In general, an increase in the state aid under the revenue limit calculation causes a decrease in the general tax levy revenue. Exceptions include changes in formula variables or voter-approved authority to increase taxes with a new operational exemption. The three major outstanding variables that determine revenue, again, include the October 1 Equalized Property Valuation, the annual 3rd Friday count in September, and the October 15th State Aid Certification. The three-year average student full-time equivalent membership is estimated at $4,055. FTE includes summer school at 40%, and the September FTE on 3rd Friday. The estimate used in the proposed budget for revenue purposes is based on that five-year projection that I mentioned earlier. State aid will be recalculated for the October original budget, and that is when we're able to determine the actual levy to certify in the General Fund that is allowable. The per pupil categorical aid for 2022-23 is estimated at just over $3 million, and that is $742 per current three-year average full-time equivalent students. The total estimated state sources of revenue are on line 39 at $36.5 million. Next up, we have the summary of the federal sources of revenue. Federal aid in the General Fund is typically received in the form of awards for Title I through Title IV. As you are aware, the last two years and the next two years, we will have additional federal money for pandemic relief. The 2022-23 Proposed Budget includes $1.2 million of ESER Federal Funds awards associated with pandemic. So just so that you know how much of those awards are in this proposed budget, we have a balance of about $347,000 in ESER 2, and the initial ESER 3 award is just under $900,000. So that makes up the 1.2 that's in the current proposed budget. ESER 3 has several awards, along with some strings attached to them, and we are working through how we will be spending those out over the next two fiscal years. ESER 3 expires June 30th of 2024. Federal awards are on a reimbursement basis, which means we need to get approval to spend, and then we spend it, and then we submit claims for reimbursement following that expenditure. Line 48 shows the grant awards for 2022-23 in the General Fund estimated at $1,551,000. It is not on this screen because we don't go back four years within this picture, but I wanted to give you a sense of federal money before COVID, and the 1920 district federal revenue was $421,000. So when you hear across the country about the federal cliff, this is part of what we're talking about because we're not used to getting this kind of money in the General Fund. Next up is the other sources of revenue. These are a little less than aid and levy. The summary represents sources from things such as E-rate funding, flex account forfeitures, workers' compensation, dividends, or premium refunds, rebates, recycled scrap, and retired equipment sales. So in 2021, you'll notice in the middle column that we did kind of have an influx of funds there, not a typical revenue for other sources of revenue. We just had some different things happen last year, including both a work comp dividend check and a refund, vehicle claim adjustments, and larger-than-anticipated E-rate revenue, which is why I'm conservatively budgeting this revenue for 2022-23 because some of that was a little anomaly last year. Total estimated revenue for other sources is $120,000. So this is a summary of revenue in the General Fund at $52,591,000. Next, I'll move on to the General Fund Expenditure Budget. I will give opportunity for questions between funds, so I'm just going to keep moving along unless you raise your hand. Lines 60 to 65 represent the changes in costs of instruction. The increase includes salary and benefit increases for instructional staff as well as any related costs for instruction and supplies and like educator assistance that are serving in these areas as well. Not special education, but regular education. The estimated subtotal for instruction for 2022-23 is $24.5 million, located there on line 66. One area that is not recorded here, depending on funding source, is our substitute teacher and substitute educational assistance. We use Teachers on Call, a contracted service for this, and within the last two years, the State Department has shifted where we code quite a few of the Teacher on Call expenses. So if they're federally funded, then they are coded to a 430 function, which you'll see later, cost of instruction as opposed to direct instruction. So the expenses you see here are our contracted employees for instruction, not the larger cost of substitutes that is supported by other sources of funds. They're really in both places, which makes it a little confusing. Next up is the Support Services Summary for the General Fund. The estimated total cost for Support Services is $18.9, almost $19 million. You'll notice on line 70, or the function 240,000, School Business Administration, this also doesn't just include like school business management, but it also includes transportation, custodial, and maintenance. And that's where you'll see that increase in the final column to $8.5 million, and that's to help support those things that were not completed last year but committed to with vendors. Next, we have the non-program transactions. The first item on line 77 is the inter-fund transfer to special education. Fund 27 is not allowed to go, to enter into a deficit position at the end of the fiscal year, and therefore, districts in Wisconsin have an annual transfer from the General Fund to Fund 27 at the end of the fiscal year. This is estimated to be $6.3 million, $6,362,000 next year. And that you will also see then in the Fund 27 revenue as a receipt of an inter-fund transfer. Line 78 represents the estimated tuition payments to other districts through public open enrollment and private school vouchers. It also includes some of those instructional contracted costs for teachers on call, as I just mentioned. We estimate the cost to be 4.0, almost 4.3 million in 2022-23. And I already stated the open enrollment transfer for regular and special education, but it's the same going out as it is coming in. We just have a larger transfer out for those students that are residents of Holman and transfer open enroll to other schools. And it also includes our students that go to private, that are eligible for vouchers to private education. So we do estimate that to be $4.26 million in 2022-23. The total expenditures in the General Fund are estimated at $55,154,000. This represents an increase of $3.49 million over 21-22 General Fund expenditures. It does include both new recurring costs and one-time expenses. Just to recap the General Fund, we have estimated revenue at $52,591,000, estimated expenditures at $55,154,000, expenditures exceeding revenue at nearly $2.6 million, and an estimated General Fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of $16,566,000, or 30% of the General Fund expenditures. The General Fund does include restricted fund balance associated with the sinking funds, committed fund balance for retiree post-employment benefit obligations, assigned fund balance for payable obligations prior to September aid receipts, and then unassigned fund balance. The assigned and unassigned fund balance is estimated at 27.7% of the General Fund expenditures. You've all recently seen this chart at our board workshop last week. It is always delayed based on when we're able to get all of our peer comparison data. So this is as of June 30th, 2021. At that time, we did have a fund balance of just over 35%, exceeding the upper goal limit of the board of 28.9%, which was exceeded in 2019. Fund balance has been designated by the board as short-term source of funds to support employee wage increases. And effective July 1st, a more comprehensive long-term plan is necessary for future sustainability. Using fund balance as a strategy to support new recurring expenses is not recommended because it is not a sustainable source unless we also have new revenue coming in. Any questions on the General Fund Revenue and Expense Proposed Budget before I move on to the next fund?
No questions.
These will be shorter. The next one is the Special Projects Fund, Fund 21. We call it the Gift Account. This is where we account for all of our gifts, donations, fundraising, and also the Scholarship Fund. We do have over 100 sub-accounts within Fund 21, both in curricular and co-curricular groups in the district. Scholarship funds, like I said, are also included, and they account for just over $200,000 of the current balance. Accounts in Fund 21 are allowed to carry over their balances as of June 30th. The revenue is quite unpredictable for gifts and donations, and so you see here is the revenue matches the carryover balances within those 100-plus sub-accounts. The total expenditure budget for the Special Project Fund for 2022-23 is $993,000. Any questions on the Gift Account? So next up is the Special Education Revenue. Special education expenditures are accounted, revenue and expenses are accounted for in Fund 27. As stated earlier, Fund 27 is not allowed to go into a deficit position. Therefore, that inter-fund transfer is required annually. The estimated transfer for 2022-23 is $6.1 million. You can see that in the final column here on line 95. And the total estimated revenue budget for Fund 27 for 2022-23 is $9,425,000. The Special Education Fund also receives federal funding for various programming. We call it IDEA for special education and for preschool funding, and that is included in the revenue stated. This is the corresponding expenditure summary for the Special Education Budget, also at $9,425,000 for 2022-23. Estimated includes an increased adjustments for salary and benefits. And then, line 161 is where we account for contracted student placements. That is estimated at $982,000 for next year. And this would include placements for students for places such as Toledo or Catholic Charities. What am I missing, Jill? Cooley Connections, thank you. So that does vary year by year, depending on the students that are enrolled and the needs that they have. Next is Fund 39. This is the voter-approved debt service fund. This is where we account for principal and interest payments on debt due for capital projects. As of August 15th, the estimated equalized valuation state average growth is over 14%. The reason this is important is that the District of Holman often tries to keep the rate on our tax levy more constant, and a 14% average growth in the state of Wisconsin is going to likely impact the district's mill rate, referendum planning, and future state aid funding. So we're not the only ones in this boat, and it is an estimate. We'll get the Department of Revenue certified equals property value on October 1, but they're pretty good at estimates at this point in time. So we're going to be looking at a nearly 14% increase in the property value. Because of that, I'm proposing that we over-levy in Debt 39 to try to help any sort of drastic reduction in our rate. Last year, we did the same thing, and we defeased $1.5 million in debt. For those new to the board, what that means is that we, in a sense, prepaid debt on the high school addition and remodel project, saving on future interest, and then shortening the final payment on that 20-year loan, or bond payment. And so that is one thing that is allowable with this, in this fund. We are able to over-levy, meaning levying more than the principal and interest due in the fiscal year that we are in. And then, we can defease debt, which is a strategy to both try to keep the mill rate from dropping too fast and saving money to the taxpayers on the long run on that debt by paying it off a little earlier. So with that in mind, the revenue on line 166 for debt service would include not only principal and interest due, but also excess levy for defeased debt, or we can also use excess fund balance in this fund to put it toward new debt if we have a positive outcome in November. So it can be used to help with that planning and scheduling of that debt service that would have to take place when we bond for future facilities. So it does include the combination of using fund balance and 22 levy to meet the principal and interest due, plus the excess. to meet the principal and interest due plus the excess. This may change prior to the levy certification in November depending on the certified equalized valuation and the state aid certification. The estimated expenditures in the debt fund are $5.6 million. This includes the option to defease that additional debt or apply to new financing. And then the last item on this chart is in line 174, and that is the outstanding indebtedness at the end of the year. So at the end of June 30, 2023, based on the current debt on the books, which is Prairie View and High School Addition and Remodel. Those are our only two debt series currently. So as of June 30, we will have indebtedness of $17.7 million. If we move forward with any more debt defeesance, that number would go down by June 30. The next fund is the Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust Fund. This is Fund 46. It was established in 2021 in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 120, 137. The purpose of the fund is to set aside dollars for projects in the district's long-term capital improvement plan. It must be used on projects within that 10-year plan. The fund is used as a tool to level out one-time large project expenditures to incrementally reduce the impact on shared cost in the general fund rather than making a large expense in the general fund. The estimated revenue for the budget for 2022-23 is $250,000, and this revenue is a general fund transfer. Expenditures cannot occur out of Fund 46 for the first five years after initial deposit. And so the first deposit was made in June of '21. So we are still counting down that five-year clock before we can expend out of this budget, which is why you see a zero in the expenditure line item. Next up is the Food Service Budget, or Fund 50. The estimated revenue for 2022-23 is $3,283,000 on line 187, and the estimated expenditure budget is $3,578,960. You will notice that expenditures do exceed revenue in this budget, and that is because Mr. Gaspere, Director of School Nutrition, is intentionally trying to spend down a little bit of the fund balance in this fund. You can see from the three years demonstrated how it has grown, and that was the impact of free federal food for two years for all students and really positive, exceeding 100% sometimes, participation. So you have to ask how you can exceed 100%, but high school students like to eat more than once a day, sometimes. So there is some plan there to draw that down. There's still a lot of uncertainty. You're aware that meal prices just recently came to the board, which was delayed, waiting on information from the federal government on reimbursement. It's still pretty uncertain. Mr. Gaspere also has been working, always lobbying for school nutrition support and waivers, in which we've had the last couple of years. We've had various waivers, but it's just really uncertain. Again, acquisition of product has been very challenging for school nutrition. So this is the proposed right now. And lastly, we have the Community Service Budget, which is Fund 80. The estimated revenue here is $200,000. The excess or increase in revenue over prior years to help, again, support a little more steady mill rate. The additional revenue will be reserved in Fund 80 for the future. This will be, provide flexibility to under-levee Fund 80, if necessary, to support Fund 10 revenue in certification of taxes payable in 2024 without having to reduce this expenditure budget. The estimated expenditures are $100,000. That's been kind of the standing budget for this program. And these funds support the Boys and Girls Club in Holman for an educational director and other personnel, plus supplies for the Sales to Success Program. This program serves all resident students in Holman. The carryover fund balance is intentional and will help support cash flow for expenses incurred prior to tax receipts. So we have expenses to the BGC beginning July 1. We don't get tax receipts until January. And so that carryover helps, helps support those expenses for those six months prior to the new tax receipts. Community service funds are restricted to Fund 80, and therefore any remaining funds do remain in Fund 80 for future program costs. This completes the presentation of the 2022-23 proposed budget. It will be on the consent on September 12, and then the original budget and tax levy certification come annually at the end of October. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one question, Julie. The debt that we owe to Prairie View, what is the timeline on that? And what's the timeframe for that?
Oh, it's almost, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. We refunded that debt two years ago, and we shortened the timeframe. So I wanna say like three years, but I will have to double-check to confirm that. And then the high school we bonded for in 2018, and it was for 20 years for the high school addition and remodel, $23.5 million. And that one, I think, expires at the, at like 2030, but maybe shorter now because we're defusing debt and kind of prepaying it to escrow. So.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, no other questions?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 10.4. Director of Human Resources, Melissa Kates, will present the Educator Base Wage Increase for 2022-23 agenda item. To ensure approved changes are in effect for the start of the school year, this item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the District Administrative Negotiation Team. As you will see on the issue paper, the district and the Holman Education Association were unable to reach an agreement in contract negotiations this year. This resulted in an impasse. Therefore, our recommendation tonight is that the board impose the district's final offer. This offer includes a 2.95% base wage increase on the salary matrix, which equates to an increase of $1,536 per cell, steps, and lane advancement. These equate to a 4.7% total package increase. In addition to the 4.7%, you will also see on the issue paper the fiscal impact of Resolution Number 1, as there was no prior board action on that fiscal impact. So just seeking the board action for Resolution Number 1 to finalize that, which will go into effect the 2022-23 contract as well. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately.
I request that 11.6 be pulled.
Okay. 11.6 be, will be pulled. Any others? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item 11.6.
So moved.
Second.
All right. A motion by Chris, seconded by Barb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda excluding item 11.6, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item 11.6. So Brian, you are abstaining due to conflict of interest.
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the Educator Base Wage Increase 2022-23 as presented?
I'll move.
Chris, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Chris has moved. Barb has seconded the motion to approve the Educator Base Wage Increase 2022-23 as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Educator Base Wage Increase 2022-23 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. First, I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And we'll start with Chris.
Just thanks to those who came on today in support of the HEA. We do see, we do recognize you. I'm excited for tomorrow. I'm gonna be at the breakfast to kick off the school year. So that's surprisingly, after three years in the board, my first opportunity to attend that, so it's great.
Did you want to serve breakfast?
I can, I guess. What time do I have to be there? I plan on being there at 7:00, so I don't know. And I know there's an open house for the middle school and the elementary schools on Wednesday. Both my girls are excited to be going to those. And then I'm excited the Eat Street event is back out on homecoming weekend. That was a really good event last year. So I was, I was, I'm excited to be participating in that again. So that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Chris. Brian?
I'd like to wish the staff a great start to your school year, and I hope you have all success with your students. And then for the students to make this year count and take advantage of all the opportunities that we have for you.
All right, thank you, Brian. Barb?
I will also be at the Welcome Back tomorrow. I want you to know that we hear you. I'm glad you were here tonight, and I look forward to meeting many of you tomorrow that I haven't been able to meet in person. So thank you.
Okay, Alan?
I'd just like to thank all the people who spoke today for speaking and talking about the wage increase and all that. Takes a lot of courage to come up here and talk about it. And again, just appreciate making your guys this heard. Not great to a point that we didn't win the football game last week, but hopefully that's just a fluke and we'll end up winning some more this season. And then I'd also just like to echo that it's looking to be a very good school year. Finally, like a return to normal, I guess, after three years of kind of a shaky school year. So looking forward to that for the students and for the teachers.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Maggie?
I'll just echo a lot of that. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the work that you do. And I hope that you all have a really great back-to-school kickoff. And I'm looking forward to meeting most of you, to be honest. I have not, there's a couple familiar faces.
Thank you, Maggie. So I attended the new teacher training last week and welcomed the new teachers to our district with Dr. Mueller. There were 35 new teachers that took part in this training. And I was really excited and impressed with the quality of teachers that we brought into this district. So we had several teachers that came to us with many years of experience in another district. We had many that are also just out of college. And we even had one who worked most of his career in a completely different profession and decided to change to teaching. So that was really cool. So it was a pleasure meeting all of them, and I thank them for choosing Holman. I also wanna thank public participation tonight and for all of you coming out. I do wanna acknowledge the educator wages, knowing that the increase for the 2022-23 just passed tonight. With most of the board members on our current board being fairly new, I would like, I think it would be good for us to begin meeting with Meet and Confer this fall and this winter to explore more, more in-depth conversations with the HEA and the rest of the staff. So I'm very interested in moving forward with that. And I guess just to let the other board members know, Meet and Confer is an opportunity for the board to get input from our staff outside of negotiations. So gives us a chance to talk about those things. The board workshop from August 15 went really well. A couple of items I wanted to note that came out of there was we have, you know, four different committees. We're gonna be standardizing our agendas across all the committees to make things more consistent, as well as utilizing a committee report-out tool to better help board members report out committee actions taken on our policies here at the regular board meetings. So just wanting to be more transparent about that. Also, the board is considering working on a series of videos throughout the next year utilizing the 11 Board Operating Principles as our framework. So our intent is that by discussing each of these principles, it will better inform others and how the board operates. So again, trying to be more transparent. And lastly, I just wanna thank Amazon.com of French Island and the Holman Business Association for the school supply donations. So upcoming board meeting schedule. So tomorrow is the back-to-school kickoff. Yeah, 7:00 AM for breakfast, 8:00 AM for the event. I will see all of you there. Board meetings in September are taking place on September 12 and the 26th. We have another board meeting on October 10. And then October 24, we have a budget hearing followed by an annual meeting, followed by a board meeting. So that will be a longer night, that night. And then October 27 is the 2022 Osby Fall Regional Meeting and Workshop in, on Alaska. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Chris has moved. Brian seconded to adjourn the meeting at 8:06 PM. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay.